Good afternoon, folks. Thank you very much for coming. It is Wednesday, the 15th of February. Immunities Committee at two o'clock. We'll start with agenda item 657. Does anyone have any declarations of any discloseable pecuniary interests? No, I will, it's not a pecuniary interest, but just a personal interest, the approval of the small grant application that we've got today. And I have spoken to the applicant and sort of given them some advice and suggestions and help, so I won't vote on that one. For the Stanleyforth Bowls Club, they needed some help with that. I don't play bowls and they don't pay me to play bowls, so it's not pecuniary. Any apologies for absence 658? I think we've got a list, Karen.
Apologies from councillors, Brian Crawford, Ochkinson, Parker and Talbot.
Thank you very much. We are quorum however, so we will continue. 659 minutes to confirm the minutes of the Immunities Committee meeting held on the 18th of January. They were received by full council at the end of January. But our members happy that I sign them as an accurate record today. Yeah. Thank you very much. 660, Nick can't be with us today, he's on annual leave, so we've got committee officers report which has been circulated. I'm sure there are a couple of bits in here that we want to discuss, if we go through in the usual way. Nick and team have obviously been as busy as usual because lots of what we discussed last month has been actioned, some of it ongoing, some of it actually already resolved, which is great. And so the first thing on litter bins is there was a request from a member of the public for a litter bin near to the bench at Bladen Bridge. Breckland own the land and they're considering that request to put the litter bin in there. And that came from residents of Cannons Close, that request for that bin. And then on the other side of the river, there was a litter bin requested to be changed. Abbey Water Meadows, it was a metal one with a sort of open top. That Monday, it's back to last October and they have confirmed that they will be replacing that one. Nick's got quite a good list now of who owns what, so that's helping to identify some of them. And then there was a request made for a dog waste bin at Barnham Common joining the football fields. There is already a litter bin there in the car park. Certainly on one end of the car park, I'm not sure about on the other end. But Breckland council responded and we'll add this to the contractors rounds because there's been a dog bin there already that's not being emptied. But they have said that they will charge for the emptying of any waste bins now installed on town council land going forward. If we are to include them in the Breckland contractor empty. I don't know, Alan, if you know any more details about this, is this sort of a new policy? Because we don't currently pay for any of the bins on town council land to be emptied, do we?
We don't. It seems to be a new policy.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if this is coming because a while back we did have a Breckland shot across the bows to say that there weren't going to be any more bins. So that's their controlling mechanism saying, well, we'll do what we're doing at the moment. Anything extra is going to be charged for.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, it's a disincentive for us to put new bins in. You know, if plenty too many of them, that will eat into our street furniture budget quite quickly. If we have, you know, several new bins, so hopefully we won't have too many on town council land.
Do they charge for bin then?
Well, they will do moving forward. So we pay at the moment, the town council foots the bill for the actual purchase of the bins. Litter bins, dog bins, grit bins, everything. But Breckland have always emptied them for free. Moving forward, there's now an actual charge. It must be Breckland wide.
I think this is really disappointing. All I've threatened to give us a figure is how much it costs with air bins if people would like to be.
Yeah, that's very true.
You know, because the retrograde step to more bins, the town's drawing, et cetera. We've got the things for you to come in.
Yeah.
I mean, 268 per bin, per 268 per bin for a year. That's extra money that we obviously don't have and it's we've not ever discussed this at Breckland, have we?
Yeah, no, it's, no, it's never come up at any Breckland meeting I've been to.
Just coming back on, we did have at one point when they're talking about doing any more, looking at our bins and rejigging them to see what we had. Putting larger bins in, so it's one bin in that side. But I don't know whether we finished that process or not.
No, I mean, one of the difficulties is we, as councillors and as a town council, we don't know what the most popular bins are and therefore which ones, I reckon there's an awful lot of bins in there, but they don't get emptied very often. Because they're not in, you know, sort of a sensible, well-used place. It would make sense to move them around into sort of high football areas rather than incurring additional cost.
But presumably will be an interaction with this new process if we're taking it from a Breckland side, putting it on a town council side. Will they then say, well, hold on, that's an extra one, even though they're already empty?
Yeah.
I think we need to be a little careful if we do finish that process.
Yeah, I agree. No, I agree. I mean, this one here is already in situ. We're just reminding them that they need to empty it. So I'm hoping there won't be a charge for this one on Barnham Common. But, you know, we will get to a point, no doubt, where we want to put in a new bin. And we'll have to have that conversation. Do we take one from elsewhere and have that conversation about, you know, moving it around? I certainly don't think we should be paying an annual cost to empty the bins.
May I suggest that Nick speaks to them to see what, you know, our hands will be tied in future with.
Yeah, I mean, we give a direction to Nick from the committee that our preference would be to, to not incur additional costs for emptying, but to relocate less well-used bins in the first instance. That's sort of, I think, where we're at. Good. I will take an action away to check to see if this is a district-wide policy as well. I assume it is. For all parish councils on sort of village greens and stuff. And to see how that decision was arrived at, because it's not been arrived at at a committee, so.
Is the contract up renewed this year?
Is it? I don't know. No idea. So moving on from bins on to benches, the request for the two benches on the Abbey Water Meadows has gone in. Nick's waiting updates on that. Winter grit bin requests, a request for a grit bin to be granted on Cannons Close by Bladen Bridge. Norfolk County Council Highways has been contacted and awaiting a reply to see if it can be added to the filling rounds. That came from a member of the public. And then there was one from yourself, Susie, for Vicarage Road. And again, we're just waiting to hear from Norfolk if they're happy with the proposed location. So obviously they have to be able to access it with their bags of grit. I suspect that when Nick comes back, somebody's probably, he's got responses to, so by the next meeting we'll have, they'll either be in situ, no doubt, or will know for sure. And the other piece of update is around our mowing consultation. We've spoke about this a few times. Very pleasingly, Breckland have agreed to our request to alter the frequency of mowing in their locations that we agreed to. But it says, however, Breckland want to make it clear that they would reserve the right to review this if complaints are received. And in that case, they would look to increase the number of cuts back to the original. I mean, it's kind of like caveated progress, isn't it? But hopefully there'll be compliments. Actually, it looks nice and an improvement. And the one thing I did mention to Nick is that I think it would be good if we actually, as a council, proactively went down. You know, you can get this wildflower meadow mixes, chuck some of that down to sort of help it along its way this year. So that we actually have some plants and not just weeds and brambles. But that's good that we finally got an answer. And actually, it's time for this year's mowing season. We're really happy with the committee officers report. Any questions around street furniture or anything else that's there?
That's a question, but nothing was there, so I'll have to wait for that.
Will it come up under a future agenda?
Possibly to do with the playbox?
Yeah.
Do that out.
Yeah, I do know.
We've had some complaints about this work finished at Boring Town Playbox.
Okay.
There's safety things that is put up here, but there's a lift which is a trip hazard, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm going to send, I'd mix away, so I'll wait to come back. I was going to send in some pictures.
Yeah.
This is not very good, to be fair. Not pretty very professional at all.
Presumably, Alan, we have some kind of sort of checking process to, before we sign off and pay the bill, that we would, you know, Nick or somebody would go out and make sure we're happy with the work the contractors have done. Is that how it works?
Yeah, they sent us photographs of all the work that they've done. They haven't told us very, very much. But they have sent photographs. As they finished the site, they photographed it quite extensively and then sent those photographs too. So I have seen one of the emails with that, which one was, you know, quite recall.
I'll wait till Nick comes back.
Yeah, if you could. So, on close, you say?
Yeah, I've got that for me.
We still do the weekly inspection, so the inspection would have been done on Monday for this particular week, so.
I'll send it to you when I get home, Alan, because I'm
That'd be great.
And then you can pull them on, yes?
So it's the new safety matting on the floor is too high?
Yes, there's a gap, there's a lift, that is high.
Yeah.
Then it drops down to the normal stuff and it's pitying running about.
So we've put in a new trip hazard?
Also, they're going to sink down and then that's like so long or something.
Okay, yeah, if you send them through to Alan, Chris, that'd be good, but there's always, I was nervous when we booked in the play area work because obviously January, February time with the weather. But it seems to have been, never mind, it'll be good weather and they made good progress with all of the repairs, what I've seen. Is that your first, I don't know if you know, but is the sort of first phase complete? And then we've got a sort of next phase in the new financial year with the new money? Is that how we're progressing now? No.
Rather, rather, rather here for the horse's mouth.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I get so many emails about that time.
I saw the list.
I've glanced, but I don't necessarily really study that.
No worries. See, Nick goes away and asks me questions. I'm a bit awkward now.
We receive the meetings.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, and we'll move on to 661, financial report update. Now I bet this is something you can tell us about.
I've always embarrassed when I read a few days of reading because I always find some appearances, so I do apologise. But in general, the income, we are about that, but I'm ready. Normally, we we, you know, we start receiving bits of paper instead of being getting our grants coming in for the open space. But the fact that we've already got 12,000 or 13,000 of that so far, I was just thinking earlier, I'm getting a little bit worried, so I may have to make a phone call. We have been audited by, for these grants and I think they have our funds for maybe that's reasonable today. The only other change in income is the priory, which we entered the contract, so that was paid proportionately to us. But overall, income's okay. Expenditure, right at the conclusion of the rock bottom says there's a slight overspend. Sorry, there's a slight underspend, not overspend, so I do apologise. We've done fairly well in our expenditure so far this year. Again, there's a whole lot of overs and unders, but there's not too much, you know. I think what you've always got to take into account in playpox, there's 23, of that 29,98, 15,105 pounds was actually budgeted to be done last year. And what happened is that the contractor delayed us, so the council had set aside money left to be funded from reserves. So I've actually, I just leave a chap because it's a lot easier for a year-end account purposes to keep track of my expenditure. But you always have to deduct 15,105 from our expenditure for the year to really establish where we are in terms of budget. So I think that's, we've done okay. Our toilet is going to be over our maintenance, property maintenance is higher, but we are making other savings on our open space management. And so far in our treaties, I know invoices have been coming through, but they will be processed. So hopefully there's nothing more coming through in the next two months or so. So overall, I think, you know, we've really battled at a council-wide level this year in terms of our expenditure. But this committee has actually, overall, we've done, we're, we're one against budget compared to some of the other committees.
Everyone happy? And just on the vehicle replacement process, Alan, I suspect, because it's a, or has been a contract in the past, it's probably discussed in more detail at finance. But do we still lease the vehicles? When it says replacement, it's just a replacement lease or are we going to buy one?
No, no, we'll replace leases. The problem is that since Covid and the shortage of those circuits, whatever, the chips. And we've really been, Nick has been focusing on this quite extensively. They come back, you know, Ford have told us, no, we've got no, we've got no chance of finding a vehicle. So we've got about four or five manufacturers, we just want to really get it up. But the V type could be months and months still, unfortunately.
So does that then remote to the residual amount if we can't got that renewed? Usually they're three-year term.
Yeah, we've extended it right until the maximum period of time. So our mileage is way below. I mean, we were, I think we had 25,000, 35,000 kilometers miles a year. I think the vehicles, if you haven't even done that in one year in over four years. So we don't have a mileage problem, but we do have a problem that we just can't source, you know, replacement vehicles. And it's going to take us a long time to do that. But hopefully there's no financial surcharges. Certainly there's not a mileage charge.
And presumably they're still sort of working fine and not causing any sort of operation.
Well, we have to say, we, you know, the maintenance costs start to stop building up because we have, you know, the vehicles we're wearing today. So we do have a higher maintenance cost. If you have a look at our maintenance costs this year, they're slightly higher than budget, 5490. That represents fuel prices, but it also represents maintenance costs.
Okay.
So we are cautious of that.
Yeah, but it's not, I haven't heard that we're not doing certain things because we're having vehicle value and that sort of stuff. They're still working.
They're still working.
Just above. Okay, if there's no more finance related questions, we'll move on to approving small grant applications. And I believe we've got one small grant request which has been circulated. Anything else to add on what was circulated, Alan?
I think the challenge of this grant is that they actually, they have a quite a significant project amount that they've set out. So they're doing things like mowing, greenback replacement, et cetera. And there's a little bit of money that's set aside for what we would call capital projects. And if you have a look at the, at the policy, the grant policy that we had, you can't use a small grant to offset normal, you know, day-to-day running costs. But the challenge we have here is that if we just give the grant unconditionally, that money could go to paying for the, you know, law, you know, someone to actually come and cut the grass. And my understanding of the grant programme is that that's not really what it's for. So if the committee did decide to approve this, I think it would be quite important to compile the policy to actually say that the money can only be used for non-running expenditure. You've identified some capital equipment that you want to buy, the money should only be used for that particular purpose. And then we comply with the requirements of the grant.
That's fair. Yep. Can we see happy with that? Any other questions about the grant? I mean, the process is quite slick now and circulates it well in advance, so gives us time to have a read.
The running cost is nothing new, is it? Always said back in the day.
It's, it's been the, you know, it's on the assessment checklist which I've been doing since 2020. It's, it's one of the requirements. It's actually in the grant policy and the grant policy was reviewed by this committee in June 2021, I think.
Yeah. Okay, if the committee are in favour, can I have a proposer and a seconder? Chris proposing, Susie seconding, all in agreement? Thank you. If you could note my abstention, Karen, for the minutes, thank you very much. Do we have any further small grant applications?
Yes, one claim and no, we've had a quorum, sorry.
Okay.
We haven't had one covered, sorry. I've got something single by printed in the office and it's, it's wrong.
And just for the committee's benefit, in case you didn't see it on Facebook. I went on the committee's behalf as chair to visit Grow Kids, who we gave 300 pounds to last month, to present them with a a cheque, which we quickly discovered, because we pay by backs, I couldn't present them with a cheque because they'd all have been paid. But I went to visit them and I had half an hour and had a chat with them about the work that they do. They've bought a tablet computer thing for accounts for when customers or people come in and buy clothes or get given clothes. So they can record everything, sort of paperless, and they've already bought that and I saw it in operation. And they were very, very grateful for the town council's support and wanted to relay that. There's some publicity on Facebook to try and build up a bit of awareness about the small grant scheme. If you look at our finance budget, we still do have plenty of money available for this financial year, so do encourage people to apply if you are part of any groups. There have been a few more inquiries, some since the Grow Kids piece went out. And I'm going to go and visit Dove's Nest Ministries because we also gave them 300 quid for the same reason. Certainly with Grow Kids, they were just very happy that the council took an interest in what they do and I thanked them for their work and they were very happy. Moving on to next item, 663, application for open space event.
The specification, the truth is, I should have backed up, fixed up the telephone number on the second page, but not the number of the address on the first page, so I apologise, it's in a cold business. But this really is just a function that they, that they have on the next week and it's guided forest. If you look at the second page, paragraph 11, tells me that the activity that they're actually hoping to do, so it's then for a group of 12 participants to go in a guided forest bathing walk.
And it's like bathing, I'm studying. It's just like, it's just like the sound bathing. Where they go into the forest and they have these instruments, they bang them and you listen to the noise, like sensory stuff. Is that similar to that?
No idea.
Yeah, I think, I think it is because it's not, it's not like bathing in the water.
Oh, I see.
It's up to the sun.
I've seen something like that, I'm telling you that.
It's next week, Chris, if you want to. I, you know, as long as you're content that all of the relevant paperwork's in place, insurance risks isn't, which I'm sure it would be. And the committee happy to support?
Yeah. That's not huge, it's only 12 people.
Yeah. Okay. The process works when they apply and they get permission. Would you like a proposer and a seconder? Chris is proposing. Susie's seconding.
You ask for some feedback, do you?
It's not going to be office today, but I'm sure I'll see you this weekend.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd just like to know. Get it. You can do it for us, old councillor.
And yes, if you could encourage them to do some for
Probably old councillors.
Speak for yourself. People like Chris, that'd be great.
Give me your telephone number.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, 664, St Peters, Meanwhile Use Heritage Skills Hub to review potential projects for meanwhile use for submission to MDT team to develop appropriate business plans. It's got on here, lead chairman, but you are here, Stuart, and I'm going to, I suspect you know more than I do about this.
If I'm, I'm going to know as much as I remember, the bid's put in to try and not only power assets, but in terms of bids, Charlesborough being the major three, but other heritage assets across town. And the model disrepute team, disciplinary team that we have in place for a year are working up all the things that potentially could go into this bid. Some of the things we wish for may not go through, some of the things that they come up with, there's some, something new that they know the lottery can fund. Part of the initial process to Peters was put there, and we all know the Dine Need of Wiltshire and Meanwhile Use for it, and we did put forward this heritage skills as a use for it. And that's an MDT team now putting forward what they think will be acceptable for the lottery. Because any payment this year, they're, it's for the lottery fund, it's still going. To Peters will be a large part of that. So what they're really asking for here is that we're content with what they're proposing to bid for. But also our opportunity to put anything extra that we feel appropriate for the usage, or we say, well, what about so-and-so? Why don't we put that in there? So I've not been in the nitty-gritty of this, but that's the, the general overview.
Yeah, no, that's really useful. I mean, it's collectively, it's very, very positive, isn't it? For the town. I get slight consultation fatigue. I'm sure we all do, but I read it, I thought, oh my God, he's talking about everything like jam tomorrow as usual. I'd rather just like to get on with stuff, but my frustrations. So basically, we just need to give our sort of thoughts on what's being proposed there.
Yeah, I would suggest that we're content with what they're not the finished product yet, but they've put in their capital works, which is in Dine Need.
Yep.
And then you can't just get capital money, so nowadays you've got to do all the touchy-feely stuff to, to get engagement, which is where that research exhibition event thing's coming. And it may be we've got other ideas where we can the public in there to learn more that they haven't covered with here. But the idea of a heritage skills hub, it means that you're, you're going to be a hub to drill in, whether it be napping or woodworking, but quite clearly some of the stuff can't happen in the church. But it will be the administration hub and then deliver in the places elsewhere. But you do have the assets such as the bells are quite special. You want to make most of those, so the idea of a film and the bell hat, potentially having a camera in there so that you see them being rung, even if you're not physically able to go up to that level. Again, given that thing, and then you can, building school, you can get events where people come along, learn a bit, capitalology, go now dying skills that, you know, that could be done, but you've got the asset there, you really need to do more with it.
I was reading this and I couldn't help but think, one of the biggest selling points for St Peters is its location, you know, it's right in the middle of town. You've got lovely car park at White Hart Street, you've got other car parks in walking distance, very close to the bus station, very close to the train station. So I quite like the focus on exhibition space because it's not, you can't have big events in there, it's surprisingly small in St Peters. You can't really put an awful lot on more than sort of 30, 40 people. So exhibitions, I think, work very well and we've got a lot of aspects of Fethford's history that we don't talk about. I was thinking about the town crier post on the corner of the Bell Hotel, I love that story. And just in that whole vicinity with the Charlesborough Museum, with the Ancient House Museum, with the Bell Hotel, with Stanleyforth himself, Thomas Pate, in that whole area. There are so many things that we could be doing exhibitions on or sort of interactive mini talks. I went to the pulpware thing that they did in St Peters years ago, like a little mini pulpware play. And I thought that worked brilliantly and that's the sort of thing, 20 people, 25 people. More sort of niche, so I think it lends itself to that quite well. If you want a big event, you've got the Carnegie, but this is more sort of niche and small scale, so I quite like the thought of that. And the only other thing, when we did the consultation, the thing that the public particularly liked, it came top of the list, was this idea of sort of craft stores and sort of like a mini market type thing in there. I mean, obviously we do have the Gill tour as well, but people that sort of make, that whole sort of making, it links back to what we're saying at the Great Effort for Partnership, the idea of making jewellery or people that paint thing, you know, skills, sort of like, you know, once a month, a sort of mini fair type thing of handmade crafts and that sort of thing. I think that would fit the brief quite well. Yes.
Yeah, so let's see, we can just feedback to say those ideas that maybe point in.
Yeah.
I think under the discussion points I mentioned, just what businesses or educational groups could be consulted and all could be part of the project. That could back when.
Yeah.
Today, just see. One of the questions that the Jaws is, is there any specific stakeholder group that you would like representing this group, business, education group that, that you would like to be consulted or you believe could be part of the project?
Do you want to be, you want some suggestions then? I mean, it is so sort of dying trades, isn't it? I can't think of any off the top of my head.
No, at least, just education wise, you may want to involve the academy because if you've got, you know, vocational skills that maybe because it's not all about what's gone, what's like Charlesborough Museum, Tina's alluded to that. So they need extra bits and pieces made, you can't go and get them off the shelf. You do need engineering skills to be able to do that, to working with local employers who can enter that. But again, if you've got people to go down and occasionally educate the education. But again, if you've got people to go down vocational, education wise, that may be something to overlap. With that, the other thing is education wise, you, you don't necessarily have to be. A repairer or a flint knapper or anything like that, it may be you're looking at heritage as a whole. So again, schools may be, you know, wanting to, to open people's eyes, that you don't have to be a mathematician or a builder, there are. Other opportunities that there which they can get involved because we have a, a big heritage offer, you know, doing with it as we all know. But if somebody is looking to go into the, the leisure industry, how, how the, the, those schools connect, so I think the schools ought to be. Ancient House ought to be consulted, I suspect they're going to be there anyway. But it's an overflow space for them because that's short space.
Yeah, very much.
Things there, but because you don't quite know the internal layout of St Peter's, what you will be, won't be able to do that. If you turn subdivision into offices, then you're probably left with just a reception area. But if you are going to have an open plan area, then that can be your exhibitions, which your, your art groups may want to use. Because we don't have an art gallery anymore, you're right about exhibition wise. So I'm just thinking what potential users could get involved, not just. That skills people.
Yeah, I agree. Chris, which hand up.
Yeah, and regarding the education, would it be possible to work in collaboration with the people at West Stone? Who do the dying and the, is it called it bodging? When they make stuff from wood and they don't have, they use it by string and spinning machines and stuff and stuff. You know, okay, people like that, because it doesn't cost them a lot, does it, overall? I do have one more, I have a slight tangent if I'm allowed to ask this, but I've been reading through here, just as I can do, and I wondered. How many people actually know where Boudica's Temple site is? And how to, and how are we allowed to get on it publicly?
Very few are aware of it, specific location. I did ask a few years back to put an notice board on the Monk Road, there's a little pull in there to, to get that, to make. I was talking with Chris Howarth many years ago when he was working for Cranestay. Within a year, that'll all be developed as a country park and I had a five plan bet with him and he still owes me the five. But you're right, there, there is noises being made within this heritage offer to get Kingsfield. Pigeon involved with it to link Kingsfield site up to Boudica site so that we do. Get a bit more awareness of that, but you're right, you know, it's a national importance and we. Don't really do anything about it and even as, as local people, we don't, you know, appreciate what we've gone.
Fair, I mean, I, I suppose, when I read that, I didn't know it was there.
You do remember when the Fethford Treasure was under, which was on the banks, there's a, a site that adjoined to that is the field where. Noticed it from there, so there was a full scale archaeological dig up there and that's quite a thing, but again, that's an exhibition. That could be done in St Peter's to put people on guard to it.
Okay, thank you.
And in terms of other consultations, both Chris and I sit on the Breckland area museums committee. And all of the senior museum staff from the county council attend that, only meets two or three times a year, something like that. And there's always a report from the ancient house and also from Gresnor as the two museums, but certainly all the senior staff from county museums do go to that. And it'd be nice to get mine from them on what we're trying to do. I always feel a bit like the poor relation when we go because. It's very much Gresnor, 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 all the meetings are now at Gresnor, it used to alternate between the two. And if we're not careful, we won't have an ancient house museum, you know, county will row back and I, you know. Chris and I go to sort of beat the drum for Fethford really, I've got to go there next Monday. Yeah, I saw that, but you know, it's a joint committee, I go as a county councillor, Chris goes as Breckling. But it's supposed to be about museums in Breckland, so we want to make sure the committee have it on their radar. And there was something else I was thinking of. I assume West Suffolk College and the various other colleges will be consulted, Fethford Academy obviously, but West Suffolk College as well. Any other comments from people? I mean, this is just one aspect of the, the overall. Heritage master plan, we're looking at the St Peters and other committees will be looking at their bit, but. I think the St Peter's one is fairly well developed because it's been spoken about for a long while, so. Presumably we have costings for all of the actual capital costs and repair work and.
The MDT team are doing.
Oh, I see.
Building up some of that.
They'll refresh all of that. No doubt, it's a damn sight more expensive now than it was two thousand and eight when we took St Peter's on.
And there is the consultation day on the twenty third, fourth of Feb, which, you know, invite everybody to go along to, to. Have their two pens, but as we all know, we'll give it time, as you said.
I don't think there's a lot of understanding or awareness amongst the council for what, for all of this, I feel. You know, like, we've been told what's going on and, okay, we've been asked today, but, you know. I don't feel like the council is necessarily aware as a whole. That's just the best observation. Fortunately, there's only a few of us here today, so we can't get much of a feedback.
The next step to give you feedback of that first consultation. Formally to the committee. You've given today. Yeah. That consultation day.
So we have these people for a year, when does that year start and stop?
I think it started in November.
So realistically, the new council from May, this whole project will be a fairly major piece of work for the new council. Good, well, hopefully that brings some new energy to it. Feel we suffer from an energy vacuum in the wider council at the moment. Sorry?
More people are feeding to be good.
Yeah, exactly. I feel like I dare not turn up, but we won't be in quarrel. Right. Hopefully Karen, you can make sense of some of that for the minutes, a discussion took place. One more item today than six, six, five, grazer years tender. To receive feedback on the evaluation of the tenders received and potential grazer years interviewed. First thing to say is a big thanks to Chris and Dave on behalf of the committee for. Conducting the work and also Nick. Presumably, I know there were some outside people and I can't remember who, I know one was from Euston. Yeah. And Cindy from, yeah, Nick from BF, presumably we've written to them and thanked them on behalf of the committee or can we do that? Because I think they gave up quite a lot of time, I think it was all day, Dave told me. And he said he, Dave's not here today, but he did tell me he found their help, you know, invaluable, so I think we should be very grateful today. Anyway, it says lead councillor, over to you, Chris.
I only went on this to make an odd number. Then you two of us anyway, it was an interesting day, I said, the questions that Andrew and Nick. I mean, they were really good, they had all the idea of what was going, they asked a really searching questions. We had three people turn up, the first one has been discounted, he's really not experienced enough as yet, it has only got. Very, and he was overwhelmed by the whole experience anyway, so now it's important, and then the second. Two, which really, really professional, really good. Disappointingly, there's shortfalls on both of them. The major shortfall from Grazer A is he only has cattle. So he was going to talk about putting a couple of cattle onto Castlebound, but they would graze, he's a rare breed, it's camel. I forgot their name, they're Red Pole or something, they would join there and graze it down. The difference in grazing between cattle and sheep is that cattle will eat the woody stems, whereas sheep won't. Just quite interesting, but he has no sheep. The second, the third, or the second one, Grazer B, he has sheep and cattle. He would be prepared to put sheep on the castle park, but with reservations. He would like to, when his sheep is on it, he would like to close part of the park down, no, I can't, dear steward. Don't you, don't think we can do that. Close part of the park.
Oh, right.
Yeah, because of fears of dog attacks as I was on the ship.
And he has, he's quite prepared to go on to Barnham Common. Little bit provides that we helped him to build a holding. Because if you have a stick or, if you had a festival in there. So there is, you know, there is shortfalls on both graziers, but we were lucky to get three. The general consensus of opinion was that we'd let Grazer A to Castle Park. And Grazer B to Barnham Cross Common with its sheep, that seemed to be the only way forward and then monitor it from then, then on. The major, the cattle he would put onto Castle, that would be just two, they would be dry, so there would be no fear of attack. Because they've already have carved and it appears when cows, rather. But he was quite content and it's a very dovetail breed, he said, so.
Anything you wanted to add, Alan?
No, I think it was really just, you know. Putting sheep into the castle mound was, one of the concerns was that they could be caused quite easily by a dog, whereas in Barnham Cross Common, they could run. And there's, you know, there's quite a bit of escape for them and that seemed to be the, one of the reasons why. One of the graziers that want to put cattle in should be into the mound, with my understanding.
Yes, hopefully we can persuade the two of the Grazer A to put these some rare breeds onto, onto Ford Meadow.
Nobody wants to put any goats on castle.
The fence is not high enough. There's goat to be running all over the castle lane. People's flowers would be.
So their Grazer A is content that two cows will keep the grass down to a suitable level.
That's what he said.
Many, does it too, but.
How soon can they start?
I think it was really the subject.
And the, I asked Alan and Nick the question in advance, but I'll ask it here as well. Obviously, the cows aren't going to go up the mound, I wouldn't have fall, I fall back down. So that's too steep for them to climb up the mound, isn't it, surely?
I've told you before, don't call me Shirley, all right? You've got.
Okay.
I mean, these are.
I'm bad visions of seeing a cow on top of Castle.
These are quite stupid.
I'm just worried about the mound being overgrown.
These aren't like creatures who track things, it's okay. A leg. Front legs aren't short and the back legs. I mean, the grazer seemed quite content the fact that these cattle would go up the mound. We told him it was.
He said it was a rare breed, he said it was red poles or something.
Something like Red Pole is what he said, and there is some other belted galloways. Unbelted galloways, some other stuff.
So we are being asked to confirm Grazer A for Castle Park and Ford Meadow. Noting that the grazing plan for Castle Park will be cows. Cattle and Grazer B, which will be sheep for Barnham Common. In terms.
Grazer B already does a BTO, I don't like to say that, does a BTO outside anyway.
And in terms of the bursary that we offered as part of the tender. It was for the total, have you worked out a percentage of, because there'll be two, what that will be split down to?
I don't think we have. The appointments, they both do the next step of having that discussion with it.
One of the graziers said, perhaps, to his team that he wasn't, he wasn't too worried of that.
Okay, even better. Okay, and the only other suggestion I had to Alan and Nick was if it is going to be two cows, when I heard. Cattle and cows, I had visions of a whole herd of cows being on Castle Park and I'm much more comfortable with two. And I wondered if the grazer was happy, we could suggest to them some sort of competition for schoolchildren to name the cows. Just as a way of getting people interested in it.
Crack it, I hear.
Oe McCowface or something, okay. So. There could be a heritage theme to their name, I don't know who's going to judge this. Yeah, I think it's a nice idea.
Call after different tribes of Ascini or something, couldn't you?
Stuart, I don't want to stop the vote because I don't quite have to go, but just a couple of questions. We were told that it was overgrown, that, that we'd need a mechanical cut before things go, has that happened?
We've just recently received the approval, we, it took us quite a while to get that, but has it actually been approved?
And is there a water source available within the Castle Command area?
I think that's part, that was part of the interviews, kind of going to resolve that.
It'll be a thousand. Don't know, but the, the water on Barnham Common is being put in from mains because that's going in.
I'd just add into your idea of engaging the public, it'd be nice to have a little notice there to say these cattle are here. Why they've been chosen. Why, why we're grazing it as opposed to, you know, that gets people a bit more.
Information about the rare breeds.
As I say, I did speak to Dave and he was very impressed with both of them, how willing they were to engage the public. And even, you know, have little groups of people and meet them around, talk to them about, you know. Why they're grazing in a certain way, about the, the rare breeds, so actually I think we could have a whole sort of programme really of interesting engagement.
This one, I did forget, the education side was quite good, both of them were prepared to have school parties.
Oh, lovely.
Go over, you know, to see what was going on, they were prepared to put, no, no, this is up. And so this is a, where it is and stuff, yeah, they were both, I mean, especially the. But the cat was really keen on game. At the education, because he's, there's only eleven in all the country, he's got two.
Really?
It's very few, he's got eleven, but it's not rare, so definitely rare.
Well, shouldn't they don't eat them then if they're that rare? They're, they're literally just for grazing.
It really is, I'm just, I'm really, no, I don't think he had those ones for.
Okay.
For animal, I think they're just because.
The show cows. Just checking.
And their beef is different, it's marbled, the state thing you get from these cattle is marbled.
Non-existent, the eleven, go.
Not from these eleven, but not from the rare bunch of the other ones, it's marbled beef.
And it will be interesting to see what public reaction is to council, Barnham Common, but Castle Park. But it is only, I was, I, I did go and have a look the other day after we spoke and it is a relatively small amount of the total space. At Castle Park, which is for grazing, you know, the whole of the flat area and the play area. And the bit by the ramparts up to Castle Street, that's all still public access with no cows, so. It's a relatively small area.
I think they have to improve, sorry, the security because someone peeped on the box.
All right, okay.
Well, there had to be sort of extra notices for some people to keep their dogs on meat and all that sort of.
Yeah, there'll be emergency contact numbers, et cetera, include and a QR code.
Technical.
Because cow is not very, it's looking at.
Good, no, I think it's really good news and I'm glad we've got two, you know, what sounds to be very good grazer's and. Sort of environmentally it's good, but also it seems like it's going to be well run, so that's encouraging. Can I have a proposal in a second to adopt that recommendation, please?
You're on strike today, Stuart.
No, I just think you've put all the work in, you might as well take some of the credit.
You're now an expert on cows. But, okay, that's the last agenda item today, so thank you very much for your time. My feeling is we are sufficiently into February that we probably don't need a March amenities meeting. How does the committee feel about that? It would be in two weeks' time if we did and it feels a bit pointless.
The record is complete loss.
The next one would be the first Wednesday of April.
When do we start this further thing?
Well, we're still allowed meetings even during Pardew.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been creating meetings and work for the sake of it, so I would say first Wednesday of April would be sufficient. If we approve small grants at that April meeting, can it come out of the budget for this financial year? Meeting closed, thank you all very much.